Good evening and welcome. This is the October 2nd, 2023 special meeting of the Salisbury Civic Council. The regularly scheduled work session will follow the adjournment of this meeting. In the event of an emergency, we ask everyone to please remain calm and exit through the double doors that's located in the front here, which you enter, just so you know the exact doors, in the corner of the room. If the doors are blocked, please exit through the door on my right by pulling down the fire alarm, and it's right to the door, and it's right under the monitor. If you need any assistance, please let us know. At this time, could everyone please silence your cell phones? At this time, I would like to call for a motion to adopt the special meeting agenda.
So move second.
Now I call for the vote. All those in favor say aye, any opposed say nay.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. What a zero. Okay. I call for a motion to approve the appointment of DeSean Dottery as council member for District Two.
So move second.
Oh, wow, that was quick. Now for, and I call for a vote. For all that are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Chair votes aye. At this time, we're going to, imagine that, we're going to ministry, we're gonna have the ministration of the oath here. Could I invite Mr. McAllister and Mr. Dottery up? Mr. McAllister, can you do, yeah, go to the podium? And you will, we're gonna ministry, we're gonna do the oath here. We're gonna administer the oath.
I, DeSean Dottery.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Do the best of my skill and judgment.
Do the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of.
Execute the office of.
Council member for the city of Salisbury.
Council member for the city of Salisbury.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
Very good. You got a good break.
Yes, yes, please, please.
Yeah. You don't get away with it clean.
You don't get away with it.
Come on, George. Congratulations.
Congratulations. This is very exciting. Okay, and, and just like that, this special meeting is now adjourned. We will now convene into the October 2nd, 2023 work session. Public comments on any of the topics presented this evening will be heard at the end of the agenda. Please complete a form provided at the table by the double doors in the back there and give it to the city clerk. You will be called in the order of the receipt of the forms. In addition, this evening, you have three minutes to speak, and the city clerk will keep time. Also, our agenda item number two, annexation fees, has been pulled at this time and will Okay. Our first presentation is gonna be on the tax increment financing, the TIF policy. Finance Director Keith Cordery, is he here? Lindsay Rader of Funk and Bolton, PA, Emily Metzler of Immunit Cap Inc. Are they here?
Zoom.
They're zooming?
Zoom.
Okay. Can we come back to that? Can I move on to the next thing? Can we come back to that? Yeah, I think I'm gonna go ahead and move on. We will return to that. All right, right now, we're gonna hear from the Salisbury Police Department Apps and Programs Presentation, Dr. Walker Skeeter, Data Analysis and Crime. This is a presentation to the City Council.
Okay.
And are you Dr. Skeeter?
Yes, I am.
Okay. And we're just waiting for it to come up.
Mm-hmm.
Here we are.
So, good evening, everybody. I was asked to come here and just give a brief little overview of my position as the crime data analyst for the city of Salisbury. Thanks to Chief Minshin, he's the chief Minshin now, for the idea for me to come down here and do this. So just wanna extend my congratulations to him on his appointment as police chief of the city. Just a little bit about myself. As you can see, my name is Dr. Walker Skeeter. I'm sure you can imagine middle school was really fun with a name like that. I'm a Salisbury native, and also Salisbury University alum. Got my bachelor's in Geography and Earth Science from SU in 2016. Then went on to get my master's in Geography from the University of Alabama, and my PhD in Climatology from the University of Delaware just a few months ago. So as you can see in that last point there, it does say PhD in Climatology. Maybe saying to yourself, I'm here to give a crime data analysis presentation. There is a much more natural skill set transfer than you might think. GIS and big data analysis are integral pieces of being an effective climate scientist, and that's really what I do pretty much all day, is make maps in GIS and analyze data. So at the end of the day, like I said in my job interview to get this position, it's all just points on a map. So, looking more specifically at my position, my goal is pretty straightforward. It's really to assist the PD's command staff in any way that I possibly can, whether that would be visualizing data on various crime types across the city or across various time frames, clearly identifying areas of the city where criminal activity is more prevalent as well as less prevalent, and providing any data that I can whenever requested of specific crime types across specific areas, anything that they need to help make their jobs easier. So really, I view my position as being one of support. That's how I like to say it. It's to provide the police department with maps and statistics of criminal activity to help them decide how to most efficiently allocate their resources. And that last point there is the most important part, it's resource allocation. This position and everything that I'm able to produce helps the command staff make informed decisions about where to send their officers. So I'm just gonna kinda give you a general run through of what I would do in a normal, normal day, normal week. So I'm actually based out of Information Services down on Church Street, not based out of the police department proper, but every week, I send a report to the command staff over at PD that includes detailed summary and maps of all Group A crimes in the most recent week. Kernel density maps, we kinda think of those as like heat maps of Group A crime types across the city for the last month. Year-to-date crime type comparisons relative to last year, so seeing how 2023 is tracking compared to 2022 with regards to all manner of Group A crimes, as well as weekly time series graphs of Group A crimes, both all of them and then specific types of Group A crimes. So like, see how aggravated assaults are tracking throughout the year, see how burglaries are tracking throughout the year, and doing that on a week-by-week basis. And then on occasion, I like to experiment a little bit, test out other modes of visualization, just to keep things fresh and make sure that I'm being innovative, as innovative as I possibly can with this position to help out the PD, help out the command staff. So just a little brief rundown here of what those weekly reports look like, it's the table of the crimes, 2022 versus 2023, see how things are changing from last year to this year. This is one of your kernel density maps, again, you can kinda think of that as a heat map, you can see where in the city these crimes are most located, most concentrated, where they're a little bit less concentrated. Something like this shows how something is changing from last month to this month. This is one I just put together just this morning. The red areas are where we've seen more activity in the last month, the green areas are where we've seen less activity in the last month relative to the month prior. And then this is the neat little graph I put together as well this morning, showing how weekly Group A crimes are tracking from week to week from 2022 versus 2023. The red line being a four-week running average of 2023, the blue line is a four-week running average of 2022. So you just see how this kind of stuff would be useful information for the police department to have to help them allocate their resources more efficiently. And then this is another one of the weekly time series graphs that I've put together. This is just the number of these incident types per week is each dot there, and the line is a four-week running average to track how these things are progressing throughout the year. So another thing that I took on pretty shortly after I started here, there was a section of the PD's and of the city's website that hadn't really been touched much for about five or six months before I got here. I took on the duties of updating the city's website's crime statistics and crime maps pages every month. So at the end of every month, the records management folks over at PD go back through the most recent month's calls and just make sure that everything is cataloged correctly, and then they'll shoot me an email and say, hey, the data's all updated, it's ready for you. And then I will take all of that and I'll put together a summary of all the crimes by month throughout the year, both into the table form, as you can see it left there, and then with heat maps that you've got it right. That information, that helps increase transparency with the public, it also provides a really easily accessible look at what areas of the city have more active criminal presence, what areas have less active criminal presence. And if any of you ever want to look at this, it's just right on the PD's website, right on their homepage, I've got circled in the little red box there at top right where you can find that on their site, just go down to departmental information, that's right there, you can click on it, and there's all kinds of tabs you can click on to look at these maps and look at these tables and have access to this information for yourself. I also have proved myself to be, at least I hope I've proved myself to be, a reliable point person for any data requests that anyone at PD can reach out to. If they ever need any data for ongoing projects, if they ever wanna know like, hey, this particular neighborhood's been giving us problems for the last couple of months, can you just show us, you know, where, what addresses are repeat offenders, where this particular crime type is taking place more often? Anything like that, more than willing to help out. I have, you know, direct access to the database, so I just, you know, write a query, find everything that I'm looking for in the database, and then I can extract that and put it all on a nice map for them, get a really nice, easily digestible information for them to help them allocate their resources more efficiently. I'm also responsible for handling Clary Act, that's a Campus Security Act request, and then other Public Information Act requests. So if an outside entity needs some information from the PD, they reach out to the PD, PD reaches out to me, I'll ping the database, get what we need, and send it off to them. Another interesting thing that we've been working on for the last couple of months, this is in a collaborative effort with my Information Services coworker, Kyla Cupp, and my supervisor, John O'Brien. So we've actually written a script that is able to parse through the Wycomico County Board of Education's student list and the PD's database every night to identify addresses of children that have been impacted by noteworthy crimes over the most recent 24-hour period. So just as an example, let's say there was a burglary at a specific home in which two JMB students live, that the script that we've written would ping that address, an email would then be sent to the Board of Education that next morning to alert staff of a possible issue. Now, we're not describing too much about the exact nature of the incident, no identifying information is being given out like that. The only thing, that's just to inform the staff of a possible issue at an address where a child lives. We're not telling them anything about, like, the specific people involved, all we're telling them is that an incident has occurred at this address, just be aware of that. So there are 31 different crime types that are gonna be able to flag that script, and it's just a really nice thing to be able to just help make sure that students are staying safe. So this is another interesting thing, I'm happy to, I guess, announce this, I've created a four-week dashboard that the command staff over at PD are gonna be able to tap into whenever they want. So this is something that is able to automatically update every two hours, and what it does is it shows all of the Group A calls for service across a running four-week period. You can do, you can see all the information about each of those calls, you can see a map of where all of them are located. So I was going to do a little demo, but since I'm just using a clicker, I'm not the one driving the bus on the PowerPoint presentation, I'll do a demo for the command staff specifically at a later date, but I do have just a quick little animation here that we can go through. So I'm just gonna do a quick little walkthrough. So this is what the dashboard actually looks like. So you can see, you got a map of the city, and then all of the possible crime types that fit under a Group A call for service, that's, those are labeled off at the left there. You can see all of the locations of the crimes, they're on the map. You can see we have at the bottom there, each week, because I said it's a 28-day running four-week calls for service map, so you can highlight just by week on the bottom bar graph there, you have all of the specific crime types off at right as well, shown by the number that there were across that four-week period. So if you just want to, so you say it's, it's four weeks here, that's kinda jumbled, let's say you just wanna look at the one most recent week, just click on the bar for one most recent week there at the bottom, and you can show just that. So you wanna see the two most recent, do that as well. Let's say you just wanna see, you know, thefts, theft from motor vehicles and shoplifting over the last two weeks, you can do that as well, that's right there. You can also, there's a table at bottom left where the command staff, if they have the specific incident number, they can search for it, and the map will take them right to it if they find the incident number in the table. And if you zoom in on a specific case, this is one with no identifying information, it was at an intersection, so don't worry about that. If you find a specific case that you wanna know a little bit more information about, click on it, and it'll give you all the information that I've got access to right in there in a little pop-up. So moving forward from my position, this, this is a position I really do think has potential to continue to grow in scope. Something I didn't mention when I first started this presentation, I've only been here for seven months, this is a position that really can continue to exponentially grow. As I'm able to continue to make further connections both within the PD and then with other outside agencies, collaborative, larger scope efforts that are able to help even more and more people really do become a tangible possibility. So I'm gonna continue to work to increase this position's level of helpfulness to the PD and the command staff, you know, create more tools that allow for enhanced access to information, develop and experiment with new methods of data visualization. I'm always learning, I'm always trying to find new interesting ways to help out, I'm always trying to get better at what I'm doing. Continue to improve and streamline that weekly reporting, and identify more areas for task automation and to streamline my own workflow.
Wow. Thank you.
That's a lot of information.
That is a lot of information. Can I ask that we get that presentation sent to us, because it wasn't in our package, but I couldn't, yeah, so if we could get that presentation.
I would send the pictures.
Yeah.
I don't know who I would send that to.
Send it to the city clerk.
Okay.
Yeah.
Nicely done, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very detailed, very much.
Let's go on to the, the resolution to accept a donation of a washer and dryer for the Anst Street Village Housing Community and Development Director, Miraboda, you're not Miraboda.
He is gone this week for a conference, so I'm stepping in for him.
Okay.
I'm interim Housing and Homeless Manager for the Homeless Housing First Division.
Your name?
Amber Yor.
Hi, Amber.
Hi, how are you?
I'm welcome.
I'm here tonight to present the resolution to accept the donation of a washer and dryer for Anst Street Village, and I'm requesting that the council approve this resolution to allow the city to accept the donation.
How about consensus? We have consensus. Any questions?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Any questions?
We appreciate whoever donated that.
Oh, it was short of applying, sorry.
Short of applying.
Yep, yep. Short of applying. Now, it seems like you might have another item for us.
That's gonna be Rachel Manning, she has.
Oh, okay. Ordinance to appropriate funds for the Newton Community Center project, Housing and Community Development Director, well, excuse me, Rachel.
She's putting women in work today, didn't she?
Well, good evening, my name's Rachel Manning, Community Relations Manager for HCDV, and I'm here to present the budget amendment for the Newton Street Community Center. We're asking to move $45,718.77 to complete a STEM lab on the third floor.
So I just had a couple of questions about some of the accounts that we're pulling this money out of. I noticed that public work vehicles was something that we're pulling this out of. These aren't anything on an upcoming rotation, correct?
No, correct. These are unused funds from a bond pool, and so by transferring, from moving the money out into the Newton Project account, it's cleaning up those, that bond pool money that's not being used anymore.
Perfect, that was my only concern there. I know we're in need of some vehicles soon, so.
Any other questions? Do we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Okay, we've got five guesses.
All right, thank you so much. Have a great year.
Thank you. All right, our next item is ordinance to authorize the mayor to appropriate funds for the East Main Street Roundabout project and the Lot Five compliance project. Is that Mr. Baldwin? Okay, all right.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Sorry that I was not here the last time that this was presented to you, but happy to be back with you tonight to go over this again. So this is to reallocate funds for two projects that are, the only relation that they have is that the fact that we need money to act on each one. First one is the East Main Street Roundabout. I believe in your package, you have the image of all of the streets that come together at East Main, East William, Long Street, and Mount Herman. This would be just a feasibility study, and the NPO has, the cost of that study is $50,000. The Metropolitan Planning Organization has pledged that they can cover $28,000, and they're asking the city to cover the other 22. All of the funds from this would come from PEGO, that was, you know, in other projects which have since been completed, and so the big reutilization of those funds for this purpose is half of the request. The second half has to do with Lot Five, the small parking lot at the end of Avery Hall, which the city acquired sometime earlier, I know it would have been before 2004, I don't know exactly how long the city has owned it. When the city went to sell it, there were environmental assessments done by the prospective buyer, which are completely appropriate. Unfortunately, in that assessment, there were six underground anomalies detected and contamination in soil and groundwater. This is not an option for the city, since we are an owner, we are the responsible party for the condition of this lot, and this is a work plan that's been directed by the State of Maryland. They notified us in May, we prepared the work plan, submitted it, went back and forth with MDE a little bit, finally got a final plan at cost, and this budget amendment is to be able to fund the work that is required for compliance. Again, this is all using PEGO funds. In the initial draft, some of those funds were from North Prong Park. While I notice in the back of this attachment, the revised schedule is not there, but when it's in front of you for, if it moves forward and comes back in front of you for legislative session, the North Prong Park monies are not being touched, the additional $1,900 difference will come once again from Main Street where funds were previously also coming from.
Now, I just heard you say, no monies will be taken from North Prong Park.
That's correct.
Could we be reassured of that?
Well, that'll be in the ordinance when you see it at legislative session, and I don't know of any case where we have not proceeded exactly as what's written in the ordinance to council.
Simply because I just feel like that North Prong project has been delayed for so long, and I feel that is, if we're pulling money from it and you're saying we're not, and I don't know why it's not now, but it was money being pulled from that account to help with this roundabout, and I don't want that, because I want that North Prong area to be taken care of as soon as possible. Like I said last week, it's been almost 50, 40 years, I'm 65 years old, and it's been like that ever since I was like in my twenties. And so you accumulate, and you add up the time that North Prong has been sitting there and eyesore in our community, and I wish not to see that happen again, to beautify another part of town and to let that sit there and just go to ruins. No, I just, I don't want it to happen, and that's how I feel, and I just don't wanna find out that money has been taken from that North Prong project, I just don't.
And I assure you, that's not in here, and the administrator, we have been working on North Prong Park, the administrator has asked us to prepare a presentation to come back to council in the near future on progress that we've made so far and the direction that we're continuing to work.
And if for some reason, anyone doesn't know where that North Prong area is, it is on Lake Street, it is where the all refinery was, it was owned by George L. Ralph, formerly owned by George L. Ralph, and that's what we're talking about, that is just a continuous cantankerous eyesore to that community. So I'm just letting people know, I mean, so you ride by, you see it, you see it is an eyesore. We have a beautiful, and I hate to say it, fire department to the left of me if you're going up Lake Street North, and that's something to see, I mean, it's getting to the point where you can actually see it off the highway, and it, something needs to be done. I mean, I, I, the Six Point Roundabout is, is fine for whoever wants it, but I just wanna see North Prong taken care of.
I have a question. So can you lay out the timeline beyond this feasibility study? What does it look like for this roundabout or for the traffic? What can you lay out for council, for the public, our next steps beyond the feasibility study?
You know, I often say it in my office, and I mean jokingly, but we will move at the speed of government after the feasibility study is done, and there would be interest and agreement in moving forward. The next thing to do would be to enter a design phase, which means proceeding through getting funding, whether that's going to come from the city or any other agency, that's not defined at this point in time. That can often take a budget season to get there, and then, you know, bidding and award and the design process, which for something like this is probably on the order, just the design process after bidding and award, of six to nine months. Cost estimates will come in with that, then it's back to another round of, you know, what does it take to actually fund this, seeking other funds, grants. I commute through that intersection every day, I would love to see it improved. I think you're probably on about a five-year timeframe. Fortunately, and I think there were some concerns raised about this while I was away, that does not have anything to do with pedestrian safety improvements which are underway to be in place within the coming year.
Any other questions, concerns?
So the only thing that's on a time crunch really is the obligations that we have from MDE for Lot Five, correct? That's something that we have to move forward with.
MDE would have expected us to move promptly in July when they approved the work plan. We do have contractors and work lined up, but funding is necessary.
Because I, I mean, I was curious, when it comes to the roundabout, personally, what I would like to see, and this is after hearing some feedback from the broader community, if it's something that we can take to a public town hall and get some feedback, I know we've talked about transparency enough here on the council, probably. is on Lake Street, it is where the oil refinery was, it was owned by Georgia L. Ralph, formerly owned by Georgia L. Ralph, and that's what we're talking about. That is just a continuous, cantankerous eyesore to that community. So I'm just letting people know, I mean, so you ride by, you see it, you see it is an eyesore. We have a beautiful, and I hate to say it, fire department to the left of you if you're going up Lake Street North, and that's something to see. I mean, it's getting to the point where you can actually see it off the highway, and it, something needs to be done. I mean, I, the Six Point Roundabout is fine for whoever wants it, but I just want to see North Prong taken care of.
I have a question. So can you lay out the timeline beyond this feasibility study? What does it look like for this roundabout or for the traffic? What can you lay out for council, for the public, our next steps beyond the feasibility study?
You know, I often say it in my office, and I mean jokingly, but we will move at the speed of government after the feasibility study is done, and there would be interest and agreement in moving forward. The next thing to do would be to enter a design phase, which means proceeding through getting funding, whether that's going to come from the city or any other agency. That's not defined at this point in time. That can often take a budget season to get there, and then, you know, bidding and award and the design process, which for something like this is probably on the order, just the design process after bidding and award, of six to nine months. Cost estimates will come in with that, and then it's back to another round of, you know, what does it take to actually fund this, seeking other funds, grants. I commute through that intersection every day, I would love to see it improved. I think you're probably on about a five-year timeframe. Fortunately, and I think there were some concerns raised about this while I was away, that does not have anything to do with pedestrian safety improvements which are underway to be in place within the coming year.
Any other questions, concerns?
So the only thing that's on a time crunch really is the obligations that we have from MDE for Lot Five, correct? That's something that we have to move forward with.
MDE would have expected us to move promptly in July when they approved the work plan. We do have contractors and work lined up, but funding is necessary.
Because I, I mean, I was curious, when it comes to the roundabout, personally, what I would like to see, and this is after hearing some feedback from the broader community, if it's something that we can take to a public town hall and get some feedback. I know we've talked about transparency enough here on the council, probably finding ways to implement that, and some of our planning would be phenomenal, I think our residents are really needing that. So I was curious about implementing something like that, you know, moving forward with Lot Five, I'd love to see it something that needs to happen, but with the roundabout, implementing some public feedback before we move forward with the feasibility study.
So that's why I asked the question about the timeline beyond the feasibility to get public input on something, you know, that's going to drastically, you know, change that area. But an additional question, how did the $28,000 come about? Who negotiated the $28,000 that was offered by?
You know, I don't attend the MPO, that's another staff member that does that, but Keith is the one who put forward, I believe, put forward the $28,000.
And just so I properly understand everything, the $53,000 that's coming out of the city park phase one, what is that specifically that we're taking out of for that? Because I know you said that none of these are active projects now.
I'm sorry.
So I see that for funding portion of this, we're taking money out of a city park project. So I was curious, you said this is an active project?
So there, while those funds were put in place for the city park phase one, we currently do not have any specific direction on how to proceed. So that was looked at as an opportunity to redirect those funds to something that was active and productive.
Okay, so it's on an inactive, essentially an active project currently, okay.
Until we're given some scope or direction, that's correct.
Okay, I'd mention that just because I know we've talked about this before on the council, the park definitely needs a little bit of love and care, so just want to make sure it's not coming from an active project, so.
Any other questions, concerns?
I would just say, I've been talking to my neighbors, because this roundabout will be literally a block from my house, and I went around and spoke to my neighbors in the area over the course of the past week, and many, many of them are over the moon about this idea of having this roundabout. I understand wanting to get community feedback and that sort of thing, but I will say, all the feedback I have received from the people who are impacted from this, I've received a lot of positive feedback, so.
I guess, I hear you, it's a 50-50, because, I mean, I've been out in the community as well, and what I'm hearing is the student population that has to walk to school have raised some concerns about the airability with, you know.
Right, I think we're going to need to make sure that we're accommodating for that during the actual construction phase, but I think that overall, I mean, a lot of these students are very, very, they not only have to cross an intersection where they're crossing two streets at once with no crosswalk, but then they have to cross 50, Route 50. And it has made me nervous for years to watch these kids walk down the street knowing where they're headed, and, you know, the fact that we haven't had a serious accident there involving the children is really truly.
We haven't had a pedestrian accident, but there are plenty of accidents and crashes in that intersection.
I'm just saying, as far as a child crossing the street getting hit, I think that's been, that's been nerve-wracking for me.
I do agree with Megan.
Yes.
I do agree with her, with the town hall, as we said before, transparency is everything. And we must get, you know, if one's saying this 50, and one other's saying the other 50, let us hear it from the people. Let us hear what the people have to say, because the people are the vested interests here, and the children are as well. To me, I foresee, I just came through the roundabout up here and like got ran off the road, myself and a vehicle. So who says that it won't happen with a child crossing? I mean, I've just, it's not the first time, I busted two tires on Camden Avenue trying to avoid from somebody hitting me because they took my right of way and the roundabout. So my thing is the kids' safety, and the people who have to use that roundabout as pedestrians, that's my major concern.
Mr. Baldwin, wouldn't a feasibility study address safety as they design it?
It certainly is a feature to what changes and improvements. Obviously, we're not looking to decrease safety, and I'd also like to reiterate, the pedestrian signal and other safety improvements for this intersection are moving forward separate from this, and outside the footprint of what's being proposed for the roundabout, so they would not be affected in the future.
So the feasibility study, from what I'm understanding, is basically giving us an outline of the functionality of it, what it would do, what it would look like, and address possibly even increased safety.
And because of the immediate proximity to Route 50 and some of the ownership, State Highway Administration has a role in this intersection as well. So the feasibility, in part, brings them on board as a partner. To discussions that we've had so far with SHA, they're excited and amenable about it, or to the, amenable to the idea, but they are a much larger organization, and they
So it would be, it would be really, it would really be beneficial for the public to also hear and see what the feasibility study says?
Yes, certainly a public document.
I think if we were to have some sort of a public forum or something, it might be better to have the feasibility study done first, and then have a public forum, is what I'm, the point I'm trying to make.
Any other questions or concerns at this time? Do I have a consensus to go ahead and move this forward?
Yes.
Yes? Two yeses?
Could I ask Mr. Richard a question? So again, this feasibility study is going to detail the traffic concerns, pedestrian concerns, and what else? What, because I'm familiar with a market study given for construction and those things. What exactly would this feasibility study, meaning for, you know, given the timeline for public input, what exactly are we doing and receiving from this feasibility study?
Those things that you mentioned. And then, is it reasonable to construct a roundabout of this sort? How much queuing would you have? How many cars will you have stacking up? How far back will they stack up? Actually, they'll stack up less, that's one of the nice things about roundabouts, is that they keep things moving. But, you know, potential impact to Route 50, various streets, do they stay open, do they close? How do you move around that roundabout? In your package initially, there were at least some conceptual drawings that gave you an idea of what this could appear to look like in the future, and so it'd be an analysis of the flow through the configuration.
So without it, without the feasibility study, basically, if we have a public meeting about the roundabout, we're basically guessing, we don't know what the study would say or not say. The public needs to have the facts from the feasibility study to see if it's even ideal for them.
And we don't even know if the other state agencies that would be involved would even be in favor.
Right.
You know, you don't want to get the cart before the horses.
So our initial investment to this roundabout is $22,000 before we even notice if it's going to happen?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, and then, it looks like there's two different things here, so let's, do I have a consensus to move the roundabout feasibility study forward?
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah, I can't.
I'm sorry. I just, I want to have a bigger discussion on this, honestly, how we can.
Okay, so two yeses.
I'd rather move forward with Lot Five, that is needed.
Okay, Lot, okay, yeah, because this is a two-part thing. So Lot Five, any questions or, back up, excuse me. We have two ayes, three nays to move the feasibility study forward. We're also going to break this down and talk about the Lot Five. Questions or comments about Lot Five? So what, do we have permission, do we have consensus to move this forward, Lot Five?
Yes.
Yes.
We will have to restructure the budget amendment. It's not going to include the feasibility study, but that's easily not done. We can peel the park, bring back the parking lot issue.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. It looks like we are ready to revisit the tax increment financing, the TIF policy, Finance Director Keith Corddry, Lindsey Rader of Funk and Bolton, PA. I guess they're all on the Zoom. Emily Metzler of Munichap Inc. Are we ready for that presentation? Good evening.